I'm going to open the meeting.
Second, Stephen Matelli and I.
Brett Simas, aye.
Unanimous action. First on the agenda is public comment. And done. We'll have 3.0, which is the approval of mid-meeting minutes, April 7th, 12:19, and May 3rd. We're going to hold May 5th. That was a an action that we took at town meeting for Paul Velquilla. Do some grant money on the James Street there.
I stepped away probably.
Yeah, okay. And we'll just add that.
Okay.
I'm good with the meeting minutes from the 7th to 12th to 19th to May 3rd. Brett, have you read them? Are you good with the meeting minutes?
Yes, I went through them just now. They look great.
Okay, and we make the motion, we approve the meeting minutes from April 7th, April 12th, April 19th, and May 3rd. Stephen Matelli and I.
I second the motion. Brett Simas, aye.
Unanimous action.
But, um, Madam Chair, you do you have time to do 4.2? You might want to take about taking it out of order.
4.2 joint election.
4.2 Housing Authority, joint election. We have 4.1, applicant Brittany Bestler. Is Brittany on?
Yes. I am.
Give us a little update.
Sure, yeah, I've, um, I've spoken with Rena, who is moving away and vacating her seat, and I actually went to the last meeting that they had. And, you know, plan to continue to go moving forward to the Housing Authority meetings and trying to get up to date a little bit on, you know, all the ongoings, but I know the board would not be full without, um, without someone else on it.
Authority. Do you know?
No. No, I was recognizing Mr. Gass.
Any questions from the other board members?
I do not have any questions. Just thank you, Brittany, for your interest and effort already.
I guess the only question I would have is I think there's some members here from the Housing Authority.
Yeah.
So, okay, so if you could just give us a brief update. We're endorsing the candidate, so I assume you.
It's, and the, the board is usually a five-man board, and right now we're down to three. Since I'm resigning, okay, and that leaves, that leaves us with a board that, that, uh, that is non-functional, okay? So, um, I've, I approached Brittany because, um, I'm familiar with her. She's also on the CPC. And, um, she is, she is thirty, and has, is new to town, is very interested in getting involved in town, and, and has, um, has attended both CPC and the, the board meeting, the last board meeting that we had. And she has expressed an interest in joining the board. And so, the board members and I, um, felt that she was a good candidate. I mean, she'll bring a lot of, um, knowledge and experience because she has worked, uh, in areas with affordable housing in, through, through her work. So that's very helpful.
He sees his polls.
Yeah, very much.
I also, um, I would come back on board. Been on the board for thirteen years. I, in person.
We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Do you want to, um, give some background?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry. I don't have the air.
And, yeah. 6307 at the Upton Town Hall, one main. Got to be certain, possibly. Take it off. And I can file this up. Last, that'll be, um, eight. Possessors contain ninety-four point twenty-two acres or less, and will describe on assessor's map fourteen, posses fifty-five forty-eight premises. The premises are owned by Richard J. Henderson Senior and Edward L. Gorman, trustees of the Mechanic Realty Trust. The Board of Selectmen will consider whether the town will exercise the town's first right of refusal after the pursuit of General Law Shop, section nine. Any person interested or wishing to do heard on the matter may appear to public hearing at the time and place designated. So the meeting has been opened. We can go back. Finish.
So, um, I said I was willing to come back on the board, you know, for the time being, because I know that there's not enough people on the board and would be willing to help, you know, in any capacity, any, any, anything. And, um, I know, uh, that we really do need to help right now, at this moment. And there's a hot line scoring, uh, you know, with, um, the new member coming on the board. So, um, in any way I could help for him to, too. So, you will, I pretty much know after thirty-five years of the board run. So I'd be willing to, you know, come on board. Bye-bye.
Set.
I can motion, if I don't have any other information, but I can make a motion to appoint Brittany, which is what?
Second.
Uh, make a motion to appoint Brittany Bestler to the Housing Authority for the remainder of Mr. Richard's term. Stephen Matelli and I.
I second the motion. Brett Simas, aye.
I'm the Housing Authority. Right. Yes.
Unanimous action.
Unanimous action.
Yeah.
Now we can take a vote. On the Housing Authority.
On the Housing Authority, yes. And that's you. Yeah.
So the minutes should be flat, but it was six to, it was unanimous of six people.
You need, you need us by name?
Yeah. Yes.
Uh, Richard, Richard, aye.
Richard, aye.
Richard, aye.
Yep, see?
Stephen Matelli and I.
Brett?
Brett Simas, aye.
Unanimous action. Thank you all very much.
Well, thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Service to the town.
Oh, you're quite welcome. I'm, it, I, I leave with great sorrow, but it's, it's time. So thank you very much. I didn't know, can take some chairs here.
Thank you for your service to the town.
Well, it's, it was, uh, a labor loss, okay? Been thirty-five, one time.
It's time we can return the public hearing. And this is, it's a, uh, sorry. That we're considering me off of the first right of refusal of an act of property. This was the only, um, the whole month. Oh, that's, it's, hello. It's been a touch. Exactly. The cute ones. And Katie Klein, are you on?
She is.
Maureen, before, before, before Katie starts, can I make a request, please? Okay, when there's a lot of background noise, folks on the phone aren't able to hear. So I think that it's quiet in the room now, but I think that it helps folks to hear if someone's talking. Also, if folks on the phone can please make sure your phone is muted, that also makes it nearly impossible for other folks to listen to here. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Katie. One second.
She's muted everyone, so I'm not sure how to get that.
She's on the list. She just looks muted here.
Yeah, she is muted. Kelly had to mute everyone because there was such background mute, uh, noise, and now I just need to figure out how we can unmute one person.
I think we'll be taking this. What? Could you be promoted? I am missing a mouse. Are you good, Katie, now?
Yeah, I unmuted myself, but it is, it is really difficult to hear. Um, so, pardon me if I, uh, pardon me, but now I, I, yeah, so you can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So my understanding is, uh, do you want me to speak to where we are at this point and where we're, we're going? Um, assuming, shall I do that in terms of proceeding?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, the notice of intent, uh, from the owner or actually their attorneys, their attorney, was dated February fourteenth. And that starts a clock running of a hundred and twenty days. And that a hundred and twenty days expires on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And you have already had a town meeting vote, um, which can occur either before or after this public hearing, but in this case, you have had the town meeting vote already. And that vote was to, um, acquire the property or authorization to, uh, acquire the property and appropriate the funding for acquiring the property. And so tonight you're holding the public hearing, uh, which is to determine whether the Board of Selectmen will vote to exercise the right of first refusal. And then after that, assuming that the, the Board of Selectmen, uh, votes in the affirmative, uh, we would go ahead within this a hundred and twenty-day period and record what's called a notice of exercise at the Registry of Deeds and an affidavit indicating that we, um, have notified the owner of, of the decision of the town. Um, so what we would do in terms of notification to the owner is to send, um, a letter along with a notice of exercise, a copy of the notice of exercise that's been recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and a purchase and sale agreement, which is basically the mirror, um, uh, the, a mirror image of the one that exists with the current buyer. Um, because it's a somewhat strange, uh, well, there are some dates and things that would change, um, but, um, it would be the same purchase price on similar terms, um, except for some time issues. And then, within the hundred and twenty days, what the town also, uh, completes its due diligence, and that's primarily, uh, determining that the title to the property is good, and that's underway at this point, and also any inspections of the property that the town wishes to do. And so you want, within the hundred and twenty days, to be all set and ready to close, essentially. Um, so then, um, you have, the town has, assuming that it goes, you know, goes forward, ninety days to close from the date that the purchase and sale agreement is received back from the, from the seller. Um, so we would present a purchase and sale to them, which, as I said, would, um, be a mirror image of the existing one. And then, when that is received back by the town, which presumably would be pretty quickly, um, you have ninety days to close after that. So those are the, the principal steps that the town is looking at going forward. So, questions?
Questions of the board members?
Uh, yes. Would you recommend that the town have the survey done in advance of those dates?
A survey? I'm sorry, is that, was that a question?
Yes, that was a question. A land survey in advance of the date, in advance of the purchase event.
If the town, if the town wants to do a survey, yes. I mean, if the survey would be a reason for the town to not exercise a right of first refusal, um, the right of first refusal, then yes. Because if you had a survey done after the fact, it, I mean, you would have already exercised the right of first refusal and excuse, and also going back, um, when you submit the purchase and sale agreement, you also submit a deposit. Um, so that deposit would be subject to being lost if, if, if the town didn't go forward and close at that point. So I, um, at this point, we're five, you know, about five weeks out from June fourteenth. Um, this is a large piece of property. I, you know, unless there's survey work, um, done, you know, started already, I don't know how it could be done within this timeframe.
And Bill, has the survey work been started?
Oh, the survey, the survey work has been started. Here it is.
Okay.
I was just going to mention, there is, however, a compilation survey filed at the Registry of Deeds for a large piece of property. So there has been some degree of survey work done on the property, but not a complete survey.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Brett?
Well, I, I just have a, I, I didn't, I'm assuming, I, I haven't heard any concerns about any property lines or anything like that, so is there some reason that we are, we would wait for a survey before we exercise this, this right of first refusal?
I'm sorry, is that to me or Bill?
Uh, it's for Steve, because I think he asked the question.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I can just elaborate, I think anytime the town purchases a property, obviously the money has already been approved, but just to do our due diligence on the town's behalf, you know, obviously, uh, we have had other problems in the past, very, very recent past, where we have problems with lot lines and problems with structures on lot lines. So I guess the question is, is, you know, I feel we need to indemnify the town, do we want to have the survey done in advance?
Well.
You know, you know, original purchase and sale that we are working off of, there's a hundred and eighty-day process there. There's a hundred and eighty days for the purchaser to execute purchase and sale, so wouldn't the town be on the same timeframe?
No, my conclusion is that unfortunately, the town, um, the statute, um, which is unfortunate in that it, uh, doesn't, uh, it, it says, i- i- it's very hard for towns to, uh, act within the timeframes that the statute requires, but the statute says clearly that it's ninety days unless the seller agrees to extend it.
And then the other reasoning that I brought that up is we asked for that money within the warrant article, though I just thought it would be good practice to have that work done. Again, that's how it was presented to the taxpayer. That's what the taxpayer voted on, so I feel we owe it to the taxpayer.
Well, I absolutely agree that if, if there's going to be a survey done, it should be done within the hundred and twenty days.
So, Bill, when do you plan on doing a survey?
The survey we would do would be for the purposes of conservation restriction.
Yep.
It'd be the, uh, of five points of bounds identifying, so that we could do this baseline documentation. Uh, I don't believe there, I don't believe there's any issue with, with this property in terms of the survey. I mean, the word is on two sides, your follower and Mechanic Street. And one side is the graph in line. Um, and like I said, there's been several surveys where files have been taken out, so there are surveys for that, and then at one point a compilation survey will be done.
Any other questions? Brett?
No, none here. Thank you.
Yeah, just clarification, really just, how do we handle the survey aspect of it? Do we do that? I understand that it's been partially done. I understand what the boundaries are, but again, when you have side boundaries and side property owners, you just want to make sure that we're not inheriting something, you know, half of a septic system or half of a pool or something along those lines, half of a barn or something like that. So, um, again, if it's not a concern of you, Madam Chairman, and it's not a concern of you, Mr. Simas, we can proceed, although I think the owners of the property are here. So I don't know if there's anything that can be arranged where we would have time to get the survey completed in advance of B and S.
Aldo, considering, uh, Longwood Street, I'm the attorney for the sellers, if I think before we enter into any kind of agreement, we want to see the purchase and sale agreement, then decide, you know, whether we can live with it, whether or not we was agreed on with that. So, once we get the agreement, we'll go forward and we can discuss that. I mean, I didn't anticipate that the survey was going to hold this thing up, so, you know, we think we'll be, uh, available depending on the timeframe that we, we have.
And.
Yeah, my only. Again, I, I don't, I don't have a problem moving forward. I would just want to make sure that ample time would, we would have ample time, understanding the problems with COVID, the problems with survey work, that we have ample time to at least have the survey completed before we actually enter, well, I understand versus say before we actually close on property. So again, that takes a hundred, uh, you know, a hundred and eighty days to get the survey work done, let's just say from today, is that considered a reasonable timeframe?
So how much time do you want?
On the right side of the north side of the property has been surveyed with Stephens Farm, and they want that, and the whole right side of the property is the Stephens Farm property. The backside of Mechanic Street property has majority of, um, stone walls that, that identify the property, the same way the Fowler Street, so there's a small section that doesn't have stone wall, and that's at the corner of Fowler and Mechanic. Um, we have had those surveyed in the past, I have access to that one corner, um, the Fowler Mechanic, it's the only spot that is not either outlined by stone wall, is already been previously surveyed by the town at the Stephens Farm.
That we can open the, the public comment. Um, try and keep the comments. And the only thing we will be discussing is the vote. Yeah.
Um, my name is Catherine Robertson, and I live on Fifty-Nine Fowler Street. I am here before you tonight for what I hope, for your sakes, mine, and the majority of the voters that showed up at town meeting, and certainly Mr. Henderson's, it is the last time I will be before you to address this issue. Um, I am speaking on behalf of a coalition of local residents who are concerned about the development of a large apartment complex on property located behind the crossroads of Mechanic and Fowler. To be extremely brief, we have discussed the need for the town to take control of the future of this land for three months now. We have worked tirelessly to raise the funds necessary to offset the amount of CPC funds required to close this deal, and have received donations from about a hundred and twenty people from throughout the town. Two weeks ago, a record or near record, a number of voters showed up at town meeting and made it clear that Upton residents wanted members of the select board to exercise the town's right of first refusal. We are here tonight to ask the board members to honor that mandate, carry out the will of Upton residents, and vote to exercise the town right of first refusal. This provides ample time to complete the work that needs to be done, uh, before the window to exercise, quote, "that right expires" on June fourth. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Any other public comments? They done, aye. We have motion to put forward.
I have the motion here. Brett, do you have?
Uh, I have it. You're welcome to read it, Steve. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, make the motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen exercise its statutory right of first refusal pursuant, chapter sixty-one, B, section nine, to purchase approximately ninety-four point two-two acres of land located at Mechanic and Fowler, Mechanic Street and Fowler Street, Upton, assessor's map fourteen, lot forty-eight and fifty-five, owned by Richard J. Henderson Senior and Edward L. Gorman, trustees of the Mechanic Street Realty Trust, and authorize the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to execute any and all documents necessary or convenient in connection with the acquisition of said property, including but not limited to a notice of exercise and purchase of sale agreement. Stephen Matelli and I?
I second the motion. Brett Simas, aye.
Now, aye. Unanimous action. I take a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, we make a motion to close the public hearing. Stephen Matelli and I?
I second the motion. Brett Simas, aye.
Maureen, we now aye. Unanimous action. Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, good evening.
Good night.
And, um, I, I just want to say, Aldo? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I, I'll talk to you tomorrow, I hope.
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Aye.
Okay. Good night. Thank you. Thank you.
That point one. I'm going to start from the session of the board.
You want to just give me a minute, a little background?
Yeah, just give me a minute.
I would ask for a motion to appoint Executive Assistant Sandy Haplet as temporary chair for the purpose of reorganization of the board.
Uh, I make the motion to appoint Sandy as temporary chair for the purpose of reorganization. Brett Simas, aye.
I'm second the motion. Stephen Matelli and I?
Maureen, we now aye. Unanimous action. I'd like to open the nominations for Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Are there any nominations? I would like to nominate Matt Sands as Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you all.
I second the motion.
What did you motion?
No. Brett? And my reasons are, Steve, is that, uh, we have a lot of issues coming for the town at the time sensitive. And I went back and talked to the chairman. I know there were a lot of specialized, but it never got put on the agenda. We got pushed out, they dropped off, one of them being that financial policy where Brett and I formally requested a meeting for, um, a discussion, and you declined to do that because you said it had no help. I mean, I want to keep the town moving forward, and I, I don't know why if someone has something to put on the agenda that it's, it doesn't make.
I'd be glad to answer that. I hate to air my dirty laundry, but we've got a lot of people listening in, so we've got a great forum here. I'm glad, I'm glad you asked. I don't believe in it. I think the town is holding an enormous amount of public money. I don't think we need a ten percent financial reserve policy. Previous chairman's me, Mr. Fleming, he didn't want it, he didn't believe in it, he wouldn't put it on the, he passed. He wouldn't put it on the, he passed over it when it was on there. And Chairman already passed over it as well. But both chairmen in advance of me did not believe in that policy. Furthermore, that 10% should be on our operational side of the budget. It should not be 10% of the overall budget. I don't want to get into knots and bolts of the whole thing, but that was my reason. And again, previous boards to me never believed in that policy. And that was my thinking. Because you two think it's a great idea, that's certainly your opinion. But if you think that presupposes me not being qualified to be chairman, I strongly disagree. And if I may go one step further, while we're here, while we have a large crowd here, I think our handling of the dismissal or separation agreement, I shouldn't say dismissal, it's separation agreement, with Derek R. D.C., I think was poorly handled by the board. I think our meeting minutes are very vague. When I can get on and read Plymouth Mass, and I can learn more about how Plymouth Mass handled their separation with their town manager and their hiring process with their town manager, again, I asked numerous times, let's have a meeting. Let's have executive session. Let's have that with Derek, and let's discuss the separation. Never made it to the board. Never made it to the agenda.
The agenda, because we did an executive session.
We did not.
We did.
We did talk. We have minutes on it.
I believe there is minutes on it. We can go back to that. But I stand with my nomination.
Well, I can tell you that it's a difficult position, Steve, obviously, for me to be and to accept this nomination. I too felt the frustration of having the expectation that any item that's presented to the board, and particularly to the chairman for discussion, be put on an agenda, particularly when majority of the board wishes to have that public discussion. So certainly, I mean, I'm committed to serving in that capacity to not only help facilitate conversations amongst the board for anything that any individual board member thinks is relevant or necessary to be brought before the community for public discussion. So I would assure you of that, Steve, that just because I'm the chair, there's not anything that you would ask for to be on the agenda that we wouldn't discuss. I wouldn't be obstructionist about anything, regardless of my personal opinion. Also, I think there's a certain level of logistical challenges that come with managing board meetings. And certainly, as they become larger, people become more engaged, the issues become more heated and passionate, like this one. I think that it's really important that we have someone that has a lot of familiarity, leading, facilitating, and managing large groups of people. That's something that I've done extensively, both at work and in various other board leadership and membership positions that I held and/or hold. So that really would be my intent and dedication to the community and to the board, is that what you'll have is a chair that will be open, transparent, direct, bring the business of the board to the people for open, public, and transparent discussion and debate, and also do my best to effectively manage meetings and make modifications to meetings and approaches as meetings need to evolve in real time or need to be managed when difficult conversations are happening.
Well, I guess I would say as a rebuttal. I obviously was chairman prior to the year that COVID was basically in our laps. I thought the meetings ran perfectly fine. I thought negotiating and drawing people together and implementing electronic meetings, I thought we did a fine job rolling that up. So I don't see how, whether or not someone is chairman, that's going to have anything to do with how you address or how you welcome in the public or welcome in some sort of a third party. You know, some other third party.
Do we need a motion? Plus, there's further discussion. I've moved and seconded. So it's further discussion and any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I would assume I can nominate myself.
Yeah, you can nominate yourself, but it needs to be seconded.
Sounds like it's foregone. I will do it just to hear the nays. So I will nominate myself as chairman, as I should be, rotated through, as every other selection has been for the last, I guess, 285 or 290 years of up and down politics. So this will be a first. But I will nominate myself. Steven Mattalian, aye?
Is there a second? Hearing that? Yeah. So you have one nomination. So we have one nomination on the floor, so now we need a motion? Yeah. You want to take the vote? Well, we'll call it. For the one nomination.
Brett Simis, aye?
Maureen, I, aye?
Is there a motion? I didn't hear a motion.
Yeah, the motion was to nominate, but the original motion was to nominate Brett as chair by Maureen, and Brett seconded it. And that's the only nomination on the floor, so that's the vote that's being taken now.
That's it. It will be a nay.
So I make a motion to rescind the former motion appointing Executive Assistant Sandra Haclaw as temporary chair. Thank you very much, Maureen, for your service to the town. We will now return to the regular business of the board. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Men's Club request for funding fireworks. And I believe we have someone, I see folks from the Men's Club in the room, and maybe some on the phone. I'm not sure who would like to take the floor.
Hi, this is Brad DiDio from the Men's Club. Thanks for hearing me today, taking up this motion. So as you all know, I've been managing the fireworks for several years now. Of course, started a long time ago, back in 1967 with the VFW. But we have continued the tradition. And as you can imagine, there's high costs involved with this event, which is essentially the largest event of the town of Upton, year after year. Each year, I come to the board to ask for funds to help offset some of the costs of the event. This year, I'm doing this again. And typically, the amount that I request is focused towards safety-related items, which includes things like tents to provide shelter and cover from the elements, the sound system, which is quite expensive, but proved to be very necessary in order to reach the large crowd and the large field that we have to penetrate in order to get safety-related announcements out to the entire crowd. Obviously, we have two-way radios that we rent to communicate both within the Men's Club staff as well as police and fire department, and then a few other items, porta-potties, safety type of things that you need to have at such a large event. Prices this year have gone up across the board for the entire event. The entire event right now is coming in at about $25,000 in expenses. So I'm here before the board to ask for $7,275 to outweigh the cost of those safety-related items, of which I also provide receipts at the end, after the event, for reimbursement of those amounts.
Thank you. Maureen, Steve, questions for Brett?
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Might have been kids in the background. Do you, Maureen, or Steve, have questions for Brad? I know we need to figure out which fund this would come out of, but this is something we've done in the past. But what questions do you have?
None. I'm a great event.
I have no questions.
Okay. Great. Which fund do we know? Sandy or Dennis specifically, which fund this usually comes out of?
I think we've done the beautification fund in the past. No?
I don't have the list of funds in front of me. I just want to make sure that we use the right one, so.
You can make the, same as last year. Yeah, you can make the motion to take the funds on the same fund as last year.
I think we have the fund that has for any purpose. I think that's where we usually hit it. I believe it was.
Yeah. I think that's right, Steve. I think that it's, I recall that it may not be the beautification. So why don't we, if you are both comfortable, one of you can make the motion, as Kelly mentioned, to distribute the funds from the same fund that's been utilized in the past to support the Men's Club's security, you know, costs.
I'd make that motion that we provide the funds from the same funds that have been used in the past of the $7,075 for the fireworks.
I would second the motion.
Maureen, I, aye?
Steven Mattalian, aye?
Brett Simis, aye? Well, that's unanimous action, Sandy. Thank you. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it.
Next on the agenda, we have three items relating to licensing applications. I would like to entertain a motion to hear the Men's Club application prior to Rushford &amp; Sons, because the Men's Club application is actually for the event, and the Rushford &amp; Sons application relates to that event. So I thought it might make sense to talk about the event first and then have Rushford come in and talk about their specific part of that. So I will take a motion to take these out of order.
I move that we take them out of order, and the Men's Club will go ahead of the Rushford requests.
Is there a second? I didn't think we need to motion out of order.
Yeah.
Yes. Second?
Okay. Brett Simis, a unanimous action. With that, the Men's Club is asking for an entertainment license. Is there someone here from the Men's Club to talk about that?
Good evening, everyone. I don't know if you can hear me. Nate?
Yeah. Thank you.
Excellent. Yes, so this year, the Men's Club is looking to host a fundraising event at the Kiwanis softball field. We're looking to host a cornhole tournament. And part of that, we requested the entertainment permit so we could have a PA system to be, again, to reach the crowd and to get across to everyone, as well as to play some music during the event. And with that, you know, obviously, Rushford is here to serve, to get the liquor permit or the beer permit for the event as well. One of the things that we are asking with that is we've spoken with Chief Bradley, and we are asking the selectmen if we could eliminate the two beer minimum, which has been a policy in the past at Kiwanis. The chief was comfortable with that. We will be having a police detail there to oversee it, to make sure that, you know, obviously, everyone is safe. But that is the event. We're looking to start it around 12 o'clock, and we see it running for about five, six hours. So it'll be over before the evening starts and before, certainly, it gets dark.
Thank you, Mr. Han. Steve, any questions?
I have none.
Maureen?
I have none also.
Thank you.
I'll make a I'll make a motion that we approve the entertainment license for the Men's Club at Kiwanis Beach. What's the date on that?
June 11th.
On June 11th, 2022. Maureen, I, aye?
With second motion, Steven Mattalian, aye?
Brett Simis, aye? This follows unanimous action. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Han. Next up, we have a one-day liquor license application from Rushford &amp; Sons. Is Mr. Goodman here?
Right here, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I should have, oh gosh, I don't remember how many, quite a big stack of one-day liquor licenses that I submitted to Sandy for this meeting. But we certainly should talk about the one for June 11th first.
Yes, please, let's do that.
Okay, well, thanks to Nate, I think we've mostly discussed it. So like our previous liquor licenses, we'll be serving specifically beer that we produce onsite at Kiwanis. According to the Men's Club, they've already confirmed the police detail with Chief Bradley. So it'll still be, like every single remote pour that we do, and every single on-site pour that we do, everything will be tip-certified. Employees of Rushford &amp; Sons Brew House, our insurance covers everything. And yeah, we'll handle all of that.
Thank you. Any questions?
The only question I guess I have, and I would say I see one signature at the bottom. Public Safety has taken a look at this, and they're okay with it? Police chief, fire chief?
Well, yes. Well, that's my direction of the safety. Yes, that would be Chief Bradley.
Okay. I didn't know he was frozen. I thought both screens were frozen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Chief Bradley has signed up for the fire department.
Okay.
Any other questions? I will take a motion about the one-day liquor license for June 11th.
Go ahead.
I'll move to make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Rushford &amp; Sons on June 11th, 2022. And hours of consumption will be 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Maureen, I, aye?
With second motion, Steven Mattalian, aye?
Brett Simis, a unanimous action. Next up, we have the application for VFW Cruise Night. On what date is it?
Several dates.
Okay. Go for it, Brian.
Okay, well, this one should be super easy. We're going to do, we had two dates last year. They were wildly successful. The VFW has very graciously invited us back Tuesdays this year. We're going to be doing every other Tuesdays in the season. And just like last year, and with all remote pours, they will be setting up a fenced-in beer garden, which we will clearly sign, no alcohol beyond this point. We will have a map, because there is no police detail, we will enforce our two beer per person maximum, not minimum. Nate, that's quite a much different, two beer maximum per person. And as always, all beer will be served by Rushford &amp; Sons certified employees. So we virtually identical to last year.
Great, thank you. I'm looking at the dates. I've got, while I'm writing them down, or maybe somebody should write them down. It's easier than scrolling through. Do either of you have any questions?
I do not. No?
All right. I've got 5:31, 6:14, 6:28. I'm still going.
Don't go so fast. I'll hold it up my cheek.
All right. So I've got 5:31, 6:14, 6:28, 7:12. Hope somebody's writing this down. That can make the motion. Yeah, 7:26. 8:09, August 9th.
And 8:23.
8:23. Yep.
I will make a motion to approve the common fictional license for Mint Gun Club. No, 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 no. For Rushford &amp; Sons, the one-day licenses that were listed by the Chairman of the Board through the Rushford &amp; Sons. We have all those, right, Sandy?
Yes, I do.
Maureen, I, aye?
Second motion? Second motion, Steven Metellio, I.
Uh Brett Simas, I. That's unanimous action for the dates that we listed. Uh next up, I think we have the Red Farm Golf Course pouring for June twenty-fifth.
Yeah, well, I should have applied for uh five dates for Red Farm as well, specifically June twenty-fifth, July ninth, July twenty-third, August sixth, and August twentieth. Is that five or six? Might have been six.
Three, four.
Five.
Five.
Five, okay, I mean, I'm I'm. So regardless, uh Red Farm Golf, we they invited us to do a few remote pours um at the golf course. Uh we I had discussed with them that we require um for the town and also for common sense, a fenced-off beer garden with no alcohol beyond that point. Without a police detail, we enforce the two beer per person maximum. And uh again, all beers will be served by Rushford and Sons tip-certified employees.
Great. Any questions, Steve or Maureen?
To be honest, I didn't even see those applications. I scrolled to the bottom. I don't know if those are attached when I looked. Did you attach them later in the afternoon because they were not there?
They're in this all on the same dock that's attached to the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have anything on those.
Okay, yeah, I'm just I I linked to the one, but I linked I looked at the one just now, so I don't know if there's a new document there. So if you go to uh the Upton website and just navigate to the agenda that way in the center in the news area or, you know, all upcoming meetings, click on that, go to the P D F, click on that, and then there's a link. They show up in there. Um there's nothing remarkable about them. Obviously, you shouldn't motion them unless you're totally comfortable, but those are the last one for those five dates that that were mentioned. Um.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we can just uh hold off till next meeting, uh we could get a better read on those. Are there any of those coming up in the next two weeks or were those all months in advance?
The this the soonest one is June twenty-fifth, so we can certainly wait till the next meeting. Is that what we'd like to do?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, thank you, Mr. Goodman. We will uh add the Red after one-day license to the next uh agenda. We'll see you later. Thanks.
See you in two weeks. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
Sandy, help us out and just make sure we have a note of that for the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh next on the agenda, we have the common victular license from Nitmuck Rod and Gun Club. Uh is anyone here from the Rod and Gun Club?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Ian Alton. I'm currently chairman of the Nitmuck Board.
The floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, so um as you know, we've long held a common victular license uh due to a unfortunate turn of events this year. We we failed to renew. Um. So basically, what we're asking for is to submit an application for a new license.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Um no, I this thing that's pretty straightforward. I seem to recall that we've done a common victular for you in the past. Is that right, as you mentioned?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep, good.
Maureen.
I'm good.
Thank you.
It.
The only the only question that I have.
I'm not I'm off camera, sorry.
Yeah, so.
Um if we could just.
Okay, we're good.
Sandy has a question.
Yeah, just sorry, just one quick question. Is there is there any significant or material difference between this application uh and previous ones in terms of uh the entertainment or uh the anything that, you know, is is requested?
No, there's no difference in what we're requesting. We're basically looking to renew the licenses. Um one of one of the things that was wrong with the previous application was the incorrect address was on the last license. I think actually it was at the time, it was the address of the person that was the treasurer, but since then that's changed. And so one of the things we will be doing is changing that to the P O box in Hope Dale so that we can actually get the renewal requests. Um which, again, unfortunately, we didn't get this year, and then we just clean forgot to renew. Um and so here we are.
Thank you, and I apologize, Sandy. It's always challenging not seeing everybody and not being able to hear with some of these microphones, so I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
I just wanted to note that um the um Nitmuck Rod and Gun Club, if you could just make the motion contingent, as you always do upon all the um inspections being completed, which they are in the process of doing. And and they have been scheduled with code.
Thank you very much.
We actually have some kitchen, I think, inspections required.
Great, so we'll make the motion. I request the motion be made uh if you're okay with a contingent on the completion of all required inspections. Will that cover it? Any other questions? Hearing none, I will make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the common license for the Nitmuck Rod and Gun Club conditioned on all inspections being completed. Maureen, one L, I.
I would second the motion, Steven Metellio, I.
Before we approve the motion, Steve, did you have a question? Or were you just gonna make the motion?
Yep.
Okay, uh I uh Brett Simas, I unanimous action. Um thank you very much for coming and uh good luck with the inspections.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have uh the Upton D P W hourly hourly uh C B A and supervisors C B A. I will hand the floor over to you. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. James. Um so as the board knows, both of these contracts were put together earlier and both were funded at the last town, the previous town meeting to this last town. Um the hourly contract was complete prior to the fall town meeting. And if you recall, Derek and D C and I did a presentation to the board for the uh execution of the memorandum of agreement, and that was voted unanimously back then. So tonight, I'm asking that the board execute vote to execute the contract itself. In addition to that, the supervisor's contract is now complete. Um there was some minor things that needed to get hashed out. And that's why it took a little longer. And with Derek's departure, it it slowed things down a little bit, but it is complete. And um at uh Steve's request at the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, Steve requested that I put together a brief summary of um the town agreed upon items and the union agreed upon items representative of that particular contract for your perusal, and you all have a copy of it. Uh and I will answer any questions that you have relevant to that contract. Otherwise, I'm asking that the board execute that contract tonight as well.
Thank you, Mr. Westgate. Uh Steve, what questions do you have?
Uh I've already spoken earlier with Mr. Westgate, so we've got uh got everything all sorted out.
Okay, Maureen.
I've also spoken with Mr. Westgate, too.
Excellent, great. Um with that, I will take a motion to execute the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four hourly C B A for the Upton D P W.
I will make a motion to execute these twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four Upton D P W hourly C B A. Maureen, one L, I.
With second emotion, Steven Metellio, I.
Brett Simas, I unanimous action. I'll entertain a motion for the supervisor's C B A.
Okay. I would make a motion to execute the two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-four Upton D P W supervisors C B A. Steven Metellio, I.
Second, Maureen, one L, I.
Brett Simas, I unanimous action. Thank you very much, Mr. Westgate.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the town manager report and updates. The floor is yours, Mr. Westgate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. Um annual street sweeping has begun this month, and we're hoping to be able to, weather permitting, obviously, but we're hoping to be able to finish that up in the next few weeks. My second item is in reference to Zero Grove Street. I I'm sure that you noticed the the contract that was executed by myself, acting as the acting town manager. Uh recently hiring Sherman and Bridle. Land surveying and engineering regarding lots fifty-eight, fifty-nine Grove Street. The objective is to prepare a form a subdivision plan to clear up supposed unintended transfer of land in conjunction with assessors map tool one parcel fifty-eight, book sixty-three nine fifty-eight, page one thirty-five, town of Upton and assessors map tool one parcel fifty-nine, D book six-two four six-six, page two fifty-one, Goodman Property Holdings LLC parcel two. Mr. Chairman, as a brief explanation, there was an error in the transfer of that property. And it is appears as though there is an issue with the property line. And uh unfortunately, site surveying was not done, just title was done on these two parcels, one that the town took possession of and one that Rushford Suns is now on top of. And it appears as though that there is a discrepancy in where the property lines are. So this company is under the assistance of K and P law and recommendation, this company is designed to uh rectify that issue. Uh water and sewer, I'm sorry, do you have any questions, sir?
Uh yeah, if we may, before we move on, um and I would open the floor, Stephen, Maureen, to any questions you might have first.
I ask my questions of Dennis.
Okay. This is something that uh again, Dennis and I spoke with this spoke about this earlier, and this is one of the reasons all the folks watching at home, this is why a survey is important. Because sometimes you don't exactly know what you buy. So here's a situation where a parcel of land was bought without the really without the guidance of the board of selection, and now we've got an issue where the boundary is not clear and obviously, there's two parties now that have a problem with it. So unfortunately, we've got to go through some steps to try to rectify this and somehow solve the problem. It's not gonna be easy to solve, but uh so it's more or less a state, not exactly, yeah, not exactly a question. But I guess I would just say to you, uh do you have any sort of a timetable when you think that that survey work will be completed?
I know the contract has been executed and uh Katie reached out to the company today to try to get a timeframe on when there would be boots on the ground. And I'm listed as the main contact, so I know I will know as soon as they're out there doing their survey. But um it was it was it was apparent that we needed to get this done quickly by Katie's involvement in helping them get the contract executed so fast, and she conveyed this to the company. So I'm expecting quick responses. But I do not have an exact timeframe. I will certainly keep the board in uh informed when I do.
Uh can you please uh clarify for folks that are on the phone specifically which property line it is and why it's important?
So this is the property that consists of the vacant lot next to the the stream. Most folks know it as Zero Grove Street. And it it also includes the property that currently has Rushford and Sons Brewery on it. Those two properties, there's a discrepancy over discrepancy over the the line between the two.
Right. And in this partly, I would presume is secondary to the fact that they were owned by the same family at one point.
Correct.
Okay. Fair enough. Any other questions? If not, uh Dennis, I'll hand it back to you. Thank you.
Item number three is um just to let the board know that I'll be coming before you in the next, not your next meeting, but probably the meeting after for setting our annual water and sewer rates. And I'm working on them as we speak, and hopefully we'll have have them done early June. And my last item, Mr. Chairman, uh we had a gas leak at the Grafton Upton Railroad. Last Wednesday, a construction company while working there struck a live line uh inadvertently causing Upton's emergency services to respond to ensure public safety. The leak was contained quickly and Ever Source was able to complete the repair. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Steve, Maureen, any questions for Dennis?
I'm well said. Thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Uh final item on the agenda, any closing comments or unanticipated discussion items? Um I would open the floor to Steve or Maureen, and then I have a comment myself, please. Thank you.
I have none at this time.
Just um I'll make a couple of brief comments. Um there's been a couple of um as you notice in our emails, we've received a couple of uh people that have stepped away from boards. So typically in the past, we accept resignations. So we probably should have accepted Rena's resignation. But I think procedurally, you know, again, this these were things I wanted to clean up as chairman. Looking forward, I have a list of things that I wanted to do better. Of course, that has been stripped away from me, so I won't be able to do that. But certain things, I feel notes, uh you know, housekeeping, getting, you know, keeping these things on the timing issue, again, disability commission, that should be on the agenda. We should be accepting these resignations so that they're in the news in the minutes. People know what seats are open instead of just showing that. And but really, basically, you know, looking forward as chairman this particular year, I was looking forward to my liaison assignments. You know, I had some things I really wanted to try to accomplish, some things I wanted to clean up. Uh but again, that looks like that's going to uh go unfinished, just be unfinished business.
So I would make.
I guess last comment, say, it certainly would have been nice to know in advance um that you two have this in mind. Um, you know, I'd like to think that boards sort of try to work together, even though maybe uh opinions may vary, but uh you know, again, to find out this evening at the meeting, uh I frankly is completely inexcusable. If you have this conversation, you have this knowledge, this is the way you wanted to do it, and I'm finding out about it now. That's, I will say it, piss poor communication. That's a legal charge, maybe, but that's terrible communication at best.
Let you know that Brett and I do not speak of this. So you're well.
So I would say a a couple of things. One, um I I completely recognize and understand that this is um you know, something that hasn't happened, you know, my being nominated as chair is not something that's happened in quite some time. Certainly not since I've been around in the past seven years. I understand from previous uh board members that it is not unprecedented, that it has happened, so I just wanted to sort of clarify the record. It hasn't been uh over two hundred years, as you had indicated, Steve, so I just wanted to make sure folks were aware of that, that this is not an unprecedented uh nomination and and appointment. Uh it also is certainly uh allowable that there is is and has been historically a custom to appoint as chair the uh member that was uh up for reelection in the coming election season. And uh in this case, we thought it was in the, you know, I and I still think it was in the best interest of the of the community to to break from that uh informal precedent. Uh and secondly, and and most importantly, I want to reassure people that uh I will pay careful attention to detail, and Steve, to your point, sometimes details are lost on people. Rena didn't need to resign, and we didn't need to accept her resignation because there were two vacancies already um on the housing authority. So that was why we didn't take her resignation tonight. Um but I digress. Any other uh comments or questions? Okay, I will take motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Dischardt has a question.
Uh.
Go ahead, Mr. Dischardt. Mr. Dischardt, you may have the floor.
I would like to turn in three resignations. And also. And also you.
I don't know how you can get that. Yeah, Maureen, maybe you can get that to him?
Yes. I'll scan these.
Take the moment to thank you for your service to the town. Obviously, Mr. DeJardin was a selectman back when I was a young kid, so along the history, it'll be 40 odd years anyways, 45 years probably.
I enjoy that.
Mr.
The town of Upton, well, not a people this long. And it's been, it's been a grind. I've enjoyed it. I've worked with guys like Paul.
Which, which was actually, that's how they said, I can imagine.
Yeah, but again, I appreciate all the time that you guys have given me to serve.
We appreciate that.
I'm still on the Board of Health. I will be on the Board of Health until probably the midsummer or later. When I leave town, I'll sign off on that also.
Brett, could I give at least to Sandy that I've scanned an email to us?
Yes, absolutely. Do you want to just describe for folks what it is and what's happening so that people understand Mr. DeJardin's actions right now and what's happening?
First one is he will be resigning from the Community Preservation Committee effective immediately. And the second one that I have is he's resigning from the Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, effective immediately also. That's the one you have, Steve.
Effective immediately, resigning from the Affordable Housing Trust.
Sandy, could you pay copies of these?
Yep.
Do we want to, I'll entertain a motion to accept these resignations?
All three of Zoning Board of Appeals, the Housing Authority, and the Conservation Commission. I make a motion to be accepted, Richard DeJardin's resignation. Maureen, one L.I.
I would second the motion, Stephen Mattaliana.
And I would make a friendly amendment that it's the Community Preservation Committee, the ZBA, and the Affordable Housing Trust. Brett Simas, I, unanimous action. Mr. DeJardins, it can't be overstated, the influence, the impact, and the legacy that you're leaving on the town of Upton. Both you and your wife Donna have given so much of your time, hard work, effort, thoughtfulness, collegiality, partnership, love and caring, and mentorship for all folks in this community. It's just been a gift, a truly wonderful gift. So you and your wife will certainly leave a mark and have left a strong legacy with the community. We all, I know I'm speaking on behalf of everyone that knows you and those that would meet you, that we wish you nothing but the very, very best that life has to offer. So very, very good wishes and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Maureen and Steve? If not, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have nothing more.
I have nothing else.
I will adjourn the meeting.
I would second. Second motion, Stephen Mattaliana.
Brett Simas, I, thank you very much, unanimous action. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Like what? Hope you feel better.